We don't get it.
Welcome. It's November 7th to your Murfreesboro City Council meeting. It is 6 o'clock. And if you will, if you'll bow with me, I'm gonna say our prayer and then if you'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Father, we come to you tonight and Lord, with everything happening in the country, I just want to thank you for the ability that we have to be here today to represent the citizens of Murfreesboro. Lord, I pray that you give us wisdom, you give us guidance, and most of all, that you give us compassion. Father, I pray and thank you for that we have the ability to agree and we have the ability to disagree, but when we leave here, we go in the community and we're one family. Lord, be with us and bless us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a couple of things that we're gonna work on. We may have to adjust the schedule tonight, so if I need to stall a little bit, Sam, if y'all don't mind, I'm gonna give y'all my political commentary on what happened at the election two nights ago. So, I'm just kidding, I'm not gonna do that. We have a couple of Stars Awards, and then we're gonna recognize a former mayor who will be like he was when he ran the meetings. He's gonna be coming in hot. So, he'll be here in a second. So, Randolph?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Tonight, I'm here to recognize the Stars recipients for the month of October. As you all know, the purpose of the award is to recognize and reward those employees who go above and beyond their normal job duties in providing exceptional customer service to both our internal and external customers. This often means being responsive, supportive, demonstrating empathy toward others. Tonight's recipients are great examples of recognizing someone in need and being responsive, supportive, empathetic, and doing something about it. Our October Stars recipients are Miguel Morales and Stanley Durelas. Both Miguel and Stanley are public work technicians in the street department. Miguel is approaching, he's a little bit past his one-year anniversary, and Stanley, he's been here almost six months. By them being here with short time in their tenure is an indication that they were excellent hires by their hiring managers, which are Tracy Brown and Raymond Hillis. These gentlemen were nominated for the award by our own Jennifer Tagg. Jennifer is one of our Assistant City Attorneys. Following are the comments that she wrote in her nomination form. On the 24th of May of this year, Miguel and Stanley were working alone northwest Broad Street near the IM Concrete Industrial Area, and they witnessed a serious car accident involving a cement truck. Without hesitation, they safely approached the scene to assist the driver, who was visibly injured and in distress. Miguel and Stanley comforted the driver, carefully helping him out of his car by supporting him both from upper, supporting both his upper and lower body. Miguel stayed by his side, holding the driver's hand and keeping him conscious until the paramedics arrived. Reflecting on the incident, both Miguel and Stanley shared that they were motivated by a strong desire to help a citizen in need and to represent the city with integrity and compassion. Their actions went well beyond their regular job duties, demonstrating exceptional empathy and care. They not only assisted an injured individual, but also represented the city of Murfreesboro in an exemplary manner. I believe they are truly deserving of Stars recognition. Miguel and Stanley, your compassion and commitment to doing something right at the right time are deeply appreciated by the individual and also the city. You make us all proud in your actions. Instead of us simply looking the other way, you chose to step up and make a difference, and for that, we thank you sincerely. And now, if you would, please stand. On behalf of the mayor, the City Council, and the great city of Murfreesboro, it is our pleasure to recognize you as the October recipients of the Stars Award.
How cool is that? So while the ring clears out, we've got another recognition that we want to make, and we've got a short video we want to play, let everyone see that before we go into our recognition.
On a day filled with sunshine and smiles, city leaders gathered with former mayor Tommy Bragg and his family to name a new stretch of roadway to Tommy Bragg Drive.
So Tommy was born and raised here in Murfreesboro. He's been married to his beautiful wife, Jeannie, for 55 years, has three children, Beth, Ann, and John. He has two grandchildren. So Tommy earned his degree in journalism from UT Knoxville. He's a retired Colonel in the Tennessee Air National Guard. So Tommy served as the mayor of Murfreesboro for three terms from 2002 to 2014. He ran on support for the city schools, sustainable economic development, and support and cooperation with Middle Tennessee State University. During his tenure, he played a significant role in the city's development, overseeing a period of substantial growth, notably the Gateway Area and Medical Center Parkway. Tommy received the Mayor of the Year Award in 2005 from the Tennessee Municipal League. He served as president of TML in 2006. So we are very lucky to have had him as mayor. I consider him a close, personal friend.
I could not have done it without the love and admiration of this beautiful woman standing next to me, and I want to give her an extra round of applause for Jeannie Bragg. It was always fun to be mayor of your city. It is a great place to live, and after working with our city employees and our fire department, our police department, Parks and Rec, planning, it just became evident to me more and more every day of what a great place we have to live and how great they are in taking care of us.
So before we ask Mayor Bragg to come up, there are several of us that got to serve with Mayor Bragg. When I first came on council, I learned how efficient that he ran a meeting. He was just an example, not only for all the council members, he was an example for all the employees. I'm jealous because he clearly outlasted my hair game, Mayor. You kept your hair for the time you were mayor. But the other part, Tommy always had a sense of humor and led with honor. I remember when I first got elected, Mayor, I never forgot this story. He said, "I'm gonna tell you a quick story about three cards." And he said, "There's three cards on your desk, and when you make a mistake, open a card." And so you open the card and it says, "Blame me. It's my fault." And then he said, "The second time you make a mistake, you open the second card, and the second card says, 'You made a mistake. Blame me.' Make that third mistake, and you open the third card, and it says, 'Prepare three cards.'" And so he was a great example, not only to someone who came on who was young and really didn't know what I was doing, but I think all, you look at the team that he put together, going all the way back through planning and through police, all of those things, I could not think of a better person that we could honor here tonight. So Mayor Bragg, Jeannie, if y'all want to come up, we've got something that we want to share with y'all. Beth, you want to come up too? It's truly a family affair.
Thanks, Shane.
No problem.
Thank you.
So we have got, and there were several of us who didn't get to be there, and we didn't want to miss this, but we have got you. A street sign has been signed by all of your people here at the city.
So meaningful. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shane. That's a lovely.
Mayor.
I'm gonna tell a quick story.
Please.
I can't believe I'm doing this, but this is about becoming mayor. It was with mixed feelings that Tommy ran for mayor, but I decided, nobody wants to be married to somebody that doesn't want to do it, jump in there. And so when he got elected, the very first phone call he made, he received was from a woman who said, "Mayor, I live in the Casa Lane area, and I cannot get cars to stop speeding through my neighborhood." So Tommy called the police commissioner. He had a group out there the next day. I'm not making this up. The second phone call he got was a woman saying, "I didn't mean me." So that's what it's like being married to the mayor.
Thank you, Jeannie, for telling tales. And as the mayor and the council members know, you could write a book about the situations that you get into and how much you enjoy working with people and especially with the staff, because they can keep you in trouble or out of trouble. And fortunately, the staff that worked with me kept me out of trouble, so I do appreciate that. I see Carrie Ginsimer back here. I see a lot of folks that I work with, Sam Huddleston. Many have lived as long as working with me and then still working, and I want to tell staff especially how much I appreciate working with them, because this council depends on you, and the council members know that, and the mayor knows that. And having those people support you and tell you kind of how you can get in trouble and how you can stay out of trouble is really good. So I do appreciate this honor, Mayor. You're very kind to do that, and as we've seen the peaceful transmission of the peaceful changing of the order today, I appreciate what you've done as mayor, and I know it's a better job you've done because your city is bigger, your staff is bigger, the traffic is more. We did everything we could do for 25, 30 years to build more and more and more roads to get them, and there's still not enough roads. As my dad used to say in the legislature, "Not everybody can get a road in front of their house like they want it." So that's the way it happens. Thank you very much.
Just get a picture here.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Mayor, there's one thing I know that we all wish that we could go back to 2012 is that you did not have to govern in the days of social media. So we didn't have social media back in 2012 that I don't believe we did.
We did, and it was wonderful to an old person like me that I think back to those days when we did.
That's right.
You had MySpace.
Yeah, that's right. We had MySpace. Yeah.
Mayor, can I just add one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Tommy and I, the first time Tommy ran for mayor is the first time I ran for public office as well. And one of our dear friends, Doug Young, ran at that same time. And I can't tell you how many times I admired not only the way or what Tommy did, but the way he went about doing it. He was a bridge builder with people. He brought people into the discussion and into the process of making a decision. I can't tell you how much, if there's anyone deserving of that name, honorable mayor of Murfreesboro, it's Tommy Bragg. And I know your dad would be extremely proud of you as well. I happened to work for a courier printing company when I was a younger too, and I got to know his dad extremely well. And the legacy that that family has meant to not just Murfreesboro, but Tennessee has been remarkable. So anyway, I wanted to say a personal thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Bragg, did you serve with my mom and dad?
No, I was just after your mother.
Okay.
And your dad was before her, so we admired the way they handled so many things that our city did in the years before I got to be mayor, which made it much easier for me to be mayor.
I know you, your father, and you visited our home a lot, so I didn't know if you, I was small, so.
Right, right.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. See you soon. All right, let's move to your consent agenda. You have 15 items on your agenda. Is there anything that needs to be removed from the agenda?
We had no, nobody.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Public comment.
The public comment, no one? Hey, I'll call you Ms. Wright tonight, and you can call me Mayor Bragg tonight.
It's only appropriate.
I'll second that.
Anything that needs to be moved off the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Pretty funny.
All right. Only time I'm doing that.
Okay, I get it. Melissa would, after about the first four months that I was elected mayor, and she would, you get such a habit calling the roll, and she would, about once or twice every meeting, call Mayor Bragg, and she would just start shaking her head. It's pretty funny. All right, we'll move to old business. You have item 17, ordinance 24032. This is amending the food truck ordinance, and this is second and final reading.
Mayor, we actually have minutes on just after.
I'm sorry. I scrolled right past it. Let's do City Council meeting minutes, October 13th and 17th, 2024, March 1st and 2nd, 2023. Are there any additions or deletions to the minutes?
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to old business ordinance, 24032, amending the food truck ordinance. This is second and final reading.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 18, ordinance 240Z33, zoning for property along West Ridge Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to ordinance 240Z34. This is rezoning property along North Maple Street. This is second and final reading. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordinance 240Z35, rezoning property along Willow Oak Trail and Robert Rose Drive. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to new business, and we have land use matters. Item 21, amending the PUD zoning for property along Robert Rose Drive. We'll need to hold a public hearing, and this is for a rezon, or the zoning of eight acres. Mr. Barbie?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This next application before you is to amend the PUD zoning for Section 7 of the Clary Park Development located Robert Rose Drive, also along Robbie Corle Lane. This request is made by Heinz Clary Park LLC and was reviewed by the Murfreesboro Planning Commission on October 2nd, 2024, at which date it did receive a favorable, favorable vote. The bulk of this change is some minor site plan changes, removing one entrance point from Robert Rose Drive, shifting some green space areas, and then also modifying the architecture. The original architecture, as you can see on your screen, or as you can see on your screen, was a more traditional architecture. They have requested to modify this to blend in better with the adjacent Clary Park developments, just what you can see here before you now. Mr. Matt Taylor with SEC is with us tonight, and he will have a presentation that he'd like to go through regarding this request. At the end of the request, the council should conduct a public hearing and then produce a vote on this application. I'll turn the podium over to Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Barbie. Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC. I've got Mr. Tom Miss Welch with me here tonight as well, and do have a very brief presentation over a amendment to the Clary Park PUD. In simple, the request tonight is really to revise the architecture inside of Area 7, as well as to eliminate one access point onto Robert Rose Drive in that same area. So I'm sure all of you are familiar with Clary Park. It is out along Medical Center Parkway. It's been very, very active over the last two years with construction and business openings, so it's highlighted here in yellow. Some of the businesses that have opened already are the Main Event, the Drakes, as well as Firebirds, and a few other businesses. We've got several other businesses under construction, such as Boona Beef and Neighbor's Bar and Grill. About three to four years ago, we approved the original PUD here. It was a mix of residential and commercial uses, varying from detached homes to multifamily, as well as standalone commercial. We're not proposing to change that mix. What we're proposing tonight is merely to make the architecture in this area more appropriate to its surroundings. So the current plan inside of Clary Park provides for 38 single-family detached, 282 single-family attached, 300 multifamily, and about 30 acres of commercial. What we've proposed to change is highlighted here in red. That's the subject tonight. And then the area in pink you just approved on second reading, that took some residential and converted it to more commercial based on the demand that we've had inside of Clary Park for other commercial uses. Overall, these revisions will decrease the number of residential units and increase the amount of commercial inside the overall development. In the proposed plan, we'll have, in the end, we'll have 21 single-family detached, 214 attached, keep the multifamily the same, and then end up with about 36 acres of commercial. Here's a blow-up of the proposed plan inside of Area 7. This plan is substantially the same as what was approved in the original PUD. We did eliminate one access onto Robert Rose Drive. However, all of these units are still alley-loaded. We still address all the public streets, as well as the stormwater area to the east. We have kept the walking trails throughout. We have decreased the density. This area was originally approved for 100 townhomes. It is, this plan has 80. You'll notice some color coding here. The blue units have, will have special treatments on the end, as those are more visible, and so they'll have an enhanced side elevation. That's something that we've used successfully in several other neighborhoods and developments around the city, so we'll keep that same concept here as well. As Mr. Barbie said, we did have townhouses and architecture approved previously. We don't think anything's wrong with that architecture. We just think that what we're proposing here is more appropriate inside of Area 7, given what's developed around it. And so previously, all of the architecture was two-story, minimum 14 or square feet, raised porches, HPRs, shallow setbacks where they address public streets. Here's those examples. As you can see, again, two stories, got those, some of those stacked porches and raised porches. Again, we think this is very attractive. This is still gonna be built over in behind rooms to go and Main Event. But whenever we started looking at Area 7, you know, we looked at things proposed like Neighbors, which is under construction, Drakes, which recently opened, Redstone, which is one of the more unique buildings along Medical Center Parkway, and then, you know, across the street at Henley Station. We just felt like that the approved architecture was not appropriate here and wanted to bring something that blended with the area more while keeping the standards high. And so we have brought this particular plan in. It offers for some three- and four-story options across all of the unit mixes. It's a good, good mix of brick, raised porches still here as well, so we think these rooftop offerings have become much more popular over the past five years or so in our city. We're excited to bring this option out to the gateway. And so all of these are just the different three, four, five, and six-unit combinations. Again, a lot of variation in that front building elevation. You can see the rooftop elements on each one of these. And then the rears, again, you'll have decorative garage doors. We'll have different mixtures of materials between each unit, so it does not look like a single long building. And then the sides, the one on the right-hand side would be one of those enhanced side elevations that I talked about earlier. And then the same thing on the right-hand side here, again, that's just the three-story option versus the four-story. Amenities, we've really got the same amenity program in here. We've got fire pits, we've got trails, and we've got pavilions. The overall development, we have already installed our knee walls, entry signage at Willow Oak Trail, as well as, I think that's Honey Locust is the other entrance there. And then the remainder of the project will maintain its same amenities. So you have pools inside of the Garden District, as well as the multifamily. And then we'll have, we've got this central lawn area. That is starting to take shape right outside of Drakes. And then internal, we've got this nice linear park. It's being built as each individual out parcel develops along Robbie Corleu Drive. And then internal, we've got several distinct areas of seating areas, fire pits, and pavilions, and we continue the linear park in the yellow here as well. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after your public hearing.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
What's the logic in cutting back the units? You said you're cutting back 20 units.
Yes, sir. It was purely just a, the size of these units, I think, was a little bigger as far as footprint, and so, you know, in order to maintain the looks and aesthetics and the green space commitments that we had made previously, just couldn't physically fit anymore on there with this particular footprint. And so I think the other footprint might have been a little narrower or something, or a little shallower, so that was the logic.
And you, but you're adding more commercial?
Yes, sir. That, the extra commercial is actually what you approved on second reading earlier tonight.
All right, if there are no other questions, we need to hold a public hearing. If you want to speak, if you'll come to the podium, you'll have three minutes as an individual, five minutes if you're representing a group. five minutes if you're representing a group like an HOA. If you'll keep all questions directed towards the council, I'll make notes and we'll make sure that we'll get, the council will get those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ 36. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 22. This is rezoning property along New Salem Highway.
Good evening again, Mayor. This next application before you is a rezoning request for approximately 92.54 acres on New Salem Highway owned by World Outreach Church. The church is requesting to rezone the existing property from residential, single-family 15 to commercial highway. They really have two main reasons in wanting to rezone this property. Number one, as you may be aware, churches are allowed, are allowed use in their RS-15 district with the issuance of a special use permit by the BZA. The board approves those applications and then they come to Planning Commission for final review and approval. By rezoning this to commercial highway, this would allow them a more direct route by going directly to plant, going directly to the Planning Commission for their review and consideration at that point. In addition, the church has future plans to, to develop more of their existing 92 acres. In the RS-15 district, they're limited to a 35-foot maximum structure height. And transitioning to a commercial highway district, they would be allowed to go up to 75 feet in height. So that's kind of a little background about why they're, they're looking at this. Our four, our future land use map identifies this property as PI, which is public or private institutional. The current use of the property is consistent with that use as, as a church. This application was reviewed before the Murfreesboro Planning Commission on October 2nd and did receive a favorable vote at that time. City council will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and at the conclusion of the public hearing, provide a vote on this application.
Any questions for Mr. Barbie? All right, seeing none, we'll open, need to conduct a public hearing for this rezoning request of 92.54 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ 37.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 23. This is rezoning property along Greenland Drive. It's 5.1 acres. Holly.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This particular project before you is a pre-existing apartment complex located off of Hazelwood Street and Old Lus Casse Street with one primary entrance off of Hazelwood and a secondary entrance that comes through off of Old Lus Casse through another adjacent property. This particular property owner is here in our audience. SW Capital Group has owned the property for a couple of years and they're been upgrading the site and they're now wanting to bifurcate. And all that means is change your four-bedroom, four-bathroom units down to one-bedroom and two-bedroom units, thereby reducing the bedroom count, but it increases the unit count because those units are smaller units. So what we found in the other projects that we've done citywide is we have found that the sewer usage has actually come down on these particular projects. So about two years ago, you all passed some special policies that didn't require sewer variance be requested for those projects as long as they were consistent with the city's adopted land use plans concerning growth and development and that the application promoted public health, safety, and general welfare, which staff believes that that is the case for this particular project. The main application, what they are asking for, is changing the density. So looking at our land use map, this particular site is designated as multifamily residential, but it is currently at 15.29 units to the acre with the changes of the internal structures, meaning they're not adding any square footage. They're just demolishing some of the existing walls, putting up new walls, and taking offline about, in this case, 24% of the bedroom units. And that will increase the overall number of units by 42, which is a net density up to 23.26 units to the acre. The applicant's engineer and architect are here in the building as well as the applicant themselves. Should you have any questions, this has been noticed for a public hearing for comments, for your consideration, and later vote on this item.
Any questions? All right, we need to conduct a public hearing on the rezoning of this 5.1 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ 39.
So moved.
Second.
Wait, let me rephrase that. This is...
Thirty-eight.
Yeah, thirty-eight. 24OZ 38.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Well, now look at item 24, rezoning property along Hazelwood Street. And this is rezoning of 6.15 acres.
And Mayor, forgive me, I'm realizing that I actually presented item 24 before item 23.
That's what I thought when I was, yeah.
That's what happens when, when we're not used to speaking to you all on a regular basis.
That's okay.
But both projects are very similar, different locations. The first one I went over is the one that is your item this evening. The one that you just voted on is the one located on Greenland Avenue.
Perfect.
And Fairview Avenue. Same exact specifics on the project. The main difference in that particular project is, again, they're reducing the bedroom count, increasing the unit count, and that is the request for the application. So going back to that one on Hazelwood Drive, again, it was changing and increasing the units per acre on that particular one by, from 96 units up to 120. The net difference is 24. So I just gave you the wrong example, but I gave you the correct information. So this particular one is increasing it by 24 net units. That's about a 15% reduction of bedrooms and bathrooms to the units. With the improvements that they're doing on-site for both prior deferred maintenance and improvements to amenities far beyond what you would normally see for a new project, we do recommend that the approval is granted. And the only exception that they are asking for is going up to a net density to 19.51 units to the acre as part of their PRD.
Okay. Thank you, Holly. All right, we have, need to conduct a public hearing for the rezoning of this 6.15 acres on Hazelwood Street. Please call, or if you have comments, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and now consider on first reading ordinance 24OZ 39.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
All right, we'll move to item 25, amending the zoning ordinance, retail, hybrid, and distribution uses.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. I'm John Tully, one of your Assistant City Attorneys. This item is an application to amend the zoning ordinance regarding retail, hybrid, and distribution uses. The purpose of the application is to respond to changes in the auto parts retail industry. City staff have received multiple inquiries and applications over the last few months from different auto parts retailers that propose a combined hybrid and distribution model for our commercial zoning districts. This is sometimes pitched as a superstore like a Super Target or a Walmart Supercenter, but the difference here is in addition to having more products in the store for customers to purchase, they also have a distribution component where they're restocking the shelves of surrounding stores and/or fulfilling customer orders at those surrounding stores. In many instances, this distribution component of the location dramatically exceeds the small retail area. So under our current zoning ordinance, staff has determined these uses would have to be limited to the industrial zones as being primarily distribution or warehousing. But staff recognizes the value that these uses have in our commercial districts, particularly because these proposals are often targeted towards troubled shopping centers, which of course could be very positive for the city. However, the zoning ordinance as drafted would not permit them to go into those areas and certainly would not permit them to go in with the special use permit process. And that's what staff here is proposing, to allow these uses, but to allow them in a controlled fashion and limited areas. Now, after multiple discussions with various levels of city government and city staff, it was determined that the best placement for these hybrid stores would be within the qualified opportunity zone. That's a zone that was designated by the U.S. Department of Treasury in approximately 2017 for investment in low-income areas. The goal there is rather than to have these many distribution centers throughout the city, we permit them in a limited area that's ripe for increased investment and to do so with a special use permit process to limit the impacts on the surrounding streets and the properties. This amendment proposes some changes in the definitions to respond to the new hybrid use as well as setting up the special use permit process for the use. And additionally, city staff have identified some related areas of the zoning ordinance that would benefit from increased clarification, particularly the definition for accessory structures and uses, which are also included. Now, this item was recommended by the Planning Commission for approval on October 2nd. And so we would ask that the council open this up for public hearing for first reading if you approve. I'm available for any questions if you have any.
Any questions? Thank you so much. All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on the amendment of this zoning ordinance. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll click, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider on first reading ordinance 24O40.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we need to move to item 26. This is a sewer allocation variance on Old Ford Parkway for Camino Real.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council again. This application before you is a sewer allocation variance request on behalf of Camino Real Restaurant for property north of Old Ford Parkway. It's formerly known as O'Charley's. Camino Real is requesting an additional 16, or additional 15, single-family units of proposed, of sewer capacity for the proposed restaurant. Our Water Resources Department has reviewed the request and confirmed that the additional capacity is available in that basin. And our Murfreesboro Planning Department has also reviewed the application and is in support of it.
Any questions for Mr. Barbie?
Mr. Barbie, what, how much more usage does a Mexican restaurant need than an O'Charley's?
That is a really good question, and I don't have an answer for that.
I mean, it's the same footprint, correct?
Yes, sir.
So why would one restaurant need more than the other?
Mr. Blomley did ask a similar question at the time. From what my understanding is, that our Water Resources Department felt that this was the most appropriate avenue and the most transparent way for them to transition to a Mexican restaurant from the O'Charley's that was there formerly.
Well, what was it when it was an O'Charley's, though, I guess? That's...
I guess they pour more margaritas at the Mexican restaurant?
There, there may not be that much usage, but I think when, at the time when it was the O'Charley's, we probably didn't have a sewer allocation ordinance in place. So I would say what, what we typically would do, and I know Valerie Smith still does it, is we get records for other restaurant locations and we, we review those, those water consumption records and base it on that, that historical account for other, other restaurants.
I was just curious. I would, one restaurant to another restaurant.
We can find, we, we'll get, we'll get you that information.
Move for approval.
I need also to abstain from this voting on this project. So I'm, I'm doing the remodel work in this, so I'm gonna abstain. And by the way, the, the site is in pretty rough shape right now, so.
I'm not gonna abstain, even though I like the margaritas.
I get it.
Move for approval.
We already have a motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Abstain. All right, we'll move, thank you. We'll move to Resolution 24R30, fiscal year 25 budget amendment, schools.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I'm presenting a resolution for your approval to recognize new funds and corresponding expenditures as well as an inter-fund transfer needed to comply with new state guidance. These budget amendments were approved by the school board during our October board meetings. They include a $10,000 donation from Conference USA and MTSU for our music program, a $15,000 grant to provide professional development to our special education preschool team, a $4,900 grant that will be used for professional development for our English as a Second Language teachers, and a $125 donation made in memory of a former MCS employee who passed away. Additionally, we have an inter-fund transfer of $71,500, which is needed to align with the Tennessee Department of Education's guidance of moving funds from our special education category to our transportation category. This expenditure directly relates to the transportation of students with special needs whose services are met outside of the city schools district. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you, Trey. Trey, I, I know we can publicly say this, but thank you for taking your Friday to come spend with us at our council retreat. So, thank you for doing that. All right, let's move to item 28, 24R31, redesignation point of contact for JAG grants.
This resolution requests to update the point of contact for our justice assistance grant program to show Amanda DeRosa as the authorized signing official and Amanda and Jenny Listgo at police as the point of contact and the local grant administrators. I recommend for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, let's move to on motion. We have a sub recipient, recipient, sub recipient agreement with Volunteer Behavioral Health.
Mayor, Council, we are requesting approval of the sub recipient agreement. This is between MPD and Volunteer Behavioral Health, and it is to provide three years of co-responder services. The funding for this agreement is coming from a pre-approved grant that we received from BGA as well as some of the opioid remediation money to provide $600,000 towards these services.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 30, Cornerstone On Demand Incorporated LMS Agreement.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council members. You have before you a request from staff requesting your approval to move forward with agreement with Cornerstone On Demand to continue delivering comprehensive online training and management, leadership, safety, and customer service for the city employees through their learning management system. Our current existing master service agreement with them allows us an opportunity to extend their services beyond this year. Cornerstone has proven to be a very heavily effective tool for educating and developing management systems and training for our employees. They offer over 2,800 modules. The system platform enable us to not only train, but also register, track, monitor employee training activities. The cost of the program is the little over, little bit over $213,000 over, over a three-year period. The first year cost is $68,000. Year two, little bit over $71,000, and year three, $74,257 for year three. The FY25 budget will cover the initial costs for the first year, and then the year two and three will be covered by the department's FY26 and 27 budget. With that said, staff is requesting your approval to move forward with this agreement. I'm available for any questions that you may have at this. and three will be covered by the department's FY26 and 27 budget. With that said, staff is requesting your approval to move forward with this agreement. I'm available for any questions that you may have with this stuff.
Any questions?
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Thank you.
Aye. All right, we'll move to item 31, the NICE software upgrade for Motorola.
Mayor, City Council, for your consideration is a request to approve the upgrade for the NICE software system from Motorola. Council approved a 10-year service agreement with Motorola for radio system maintenance in March of 2020. Included in our agreement is the NICE Gold Software Service for use by our Emergency Communications Center. Upgrading to the NICE Elite Package will add additional functions such as incident reconstruction and quality assurance capabilities. This upgrade will significantly streamline the process required by the Emergency Communications Center. This is a sole source purchased through Motorola for a cost of $222,148. Additionally, an amendment is needed to the Motorola service agreement to add maintenance and support for the Elite Software for a total cost of $174,139, build-in annual installments over the remaining six years of our contract. If approved, the one-time cost of $222,148 and the first installment of $15,225 for the maintenance support is provided for in the Police Department FY25 operating budget. Future maintenance payments, as outlined in the amendment, will be budgeted for accordingly. I have with me tonight our Emergency Communications Director, Mr. Seth Russell. He's with me here to answer any questions that you may have.
Still move.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, let's move to the purchase of police vehicles from Columbia Dodge.
All right, next for your consideration is a request to approve the purchase of seven marked police Dodge Chargers. These vehicles will be outfitted for the additional seven SRO positions that were approved in the FY25 budget. If approved, the cost of this purchase is $336,959. It is included in the department's FY24 CIP. At this time, I can answer any questions that you may have.
If there are none, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we've got more money to spend. All right, let's go to amendment to the purchase agreement with Lonnie Cobb Ford to add vehicle equipment.
For your consideration is a request to approve the amendment of the contract with Lonnie Cobb Ford to add the installation of vehicle equipment. Council approved the purchase of 20 new police vehicles from Lonnie Cobb Ford in November of 2023. Those vehicles have arrived at the dealership and will require the installation of police equipment. The state contract allows for the installation of aftermarket equipment by the dealer for a total cost of $286,292. Additionally, Lonnie Cobb has agreed to take 27 of MPD's patrol cars, scheduled to be decommissioned as trade-in, for a total credit of $57,500. If approved, the net cost of this purchase is $228,792 and will be funded by the Police Department's FY24 CIP. At this time, I can answer any questions you may have.
Still move.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we've got more money to spend. All right, let's go to amendment to the purchase agreement with Lonnie Cobb Ford to add vehicle equipment.
For your consideration is a request to approve the amendment of the contract with Lonnie Cobb Ford to add the installation of vehicle equipment. Council approved the purchase of 20 new police vehicles from Lonnie Cobb Ford in November of 2023. Those vehicles have arrived at the dealership and will require the installation of police equipment. The state contract allows for the installation of aftermarket equipment by the dealer for a total cost of $286,292. Additionally, Lonnie Cobb has agreed to take 27 of MPD's patrol cars, scheduled to be decommissioned as trade-in, for a total credit of $57,500. If approved, the net cost of this purchase is $228,792 and will be funded by the Police Department's FY24 CIP. At this time, I can answer any questions you may have.
No questions, just a general comment. I think anytime we can invest in technology that makes the public safer and your job easier, I was in my office looking out the window, I saw a police officer on the road with a gentleman, you know, sitting down handcuffed, but it was one of the gentlemen that had wrecked that car at the Masonic Lodge and taken off on foot, and it was because of that license plate reader technology that we'd invested in is why you guys were able to capture the bad guy.
Yes, sir.
So, I think it's a great investment, and I fully support it, so motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. All right, let's move to item 35, LJA Task Order Asset Management Plan Preparation.
I can answer your question earlier.
Fantastic.
It is the margaritas.
Seriously?
The Camino uses about eighteen, equivalent to 18 homes, and O'Charley was about 14 homes, and the property itself was only allotted about four homes.
Did the O'Charley's beside the Capa Sig House use more water?
Well, I didn't, I didn't research that one.
Is that due to the Camino's margaritas being better than O'Charley's?
It's a possibility.
Okay.
Anyway.
Getting a little too deep in this.
It's the most discussion ever on a sewage variance.
No, we had that Dutch Brothers.
Oh, the Dutch Brothers, yeah.
Forget about that one.
Yeah, forgot about that one.
This task order we bring...
Mayor Bragg would never have let the council get off the rails like this. On record is to say that. All right, Valerie.
The task order I'm bringing before you tonight is with LJA. It's a task order to our master services agreement to prepare an asset management plan. As you know, Murfreesboro through the city was awarded about a little over $10 million in ARP funding, and three of our projects, that went towards three of our sewer rehabilitation projects. We determined that TDEC is requiring an asset management plan in order to receive 20%, the last 20% of the funding, and TDEC has provided an asset management plan guidance document, which is about 31 pages, so I won't go into that portion. It was an unknown requirement, but this asset management plan will, it will benefit the department. The asset management plan will be sewer-specific since that is what our funding went toward. It will help us prioritize our infrastructure and as far as pump stations, gravity sewer, force mains, manholes, that type thing, regard to repair and maintenance, or rehab and replacement, and even new infrastructure. This was not in LJA's scope of work, original scope of work, so we requested that they prepare a task order in the amount, and they've provided that in the amount of $85,000. So, we request approval.
One point, just to make clear, this was not something that was made clear on the front end involving the ARP money. This was a after-the-fact requirement that TDEC implemented to get the last 20% of the money. So, it's somewhat of a movement of the goalpost.
By TDEC?
Yes, sir.
Still move. Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move to Hobus Pipe Sewer Rehabilitation Change Order Number Two.
So, our contractor, SBW Constructors, is just about, is finishing up their original scope of work. We had about $1 million left in unused line items that were put in the bid just as an in case, just in case line item for unforeseen conditions, and those line items were not used. So, we have requested the contractor to give us pricing using the unit prices to rehabilitate one more line segment. It's along the middle fork of the Stones River. When we televised our, these Hobos sewer mains back in 2019 and in 2021, this line segment that we are change ordering in was on the worst of the worst list regarding, and one of the parameters we looked for is the ovality of the sewer pipe, which can be an indication of failure. It's also one of our deepest sewer mains, and it's not good that it's by the river. It's about 30 feet deep, and so we would request approval to rehabilitate that line with the remaining funds in the contract. The contractor did ask for 100 more days is the reason it's before you to add to the contract time.
So, it's just using the unused funds that were already allocated for this project? I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item 38, Personal Days.
Sir, consistent with what I just kind of mentioned in Policy 1007, what this would do would add five personal time-off days, PTO days, per calendar year. It would be eligible for new hires. They would receive those five days upon joining the city, their employment start date, so they would be front-loaded. Every other employee, those five personal days would be given to them on their anniversary date of when they joined the city or were employed by the city. These PTO days would not accrue. They would have to be used within that anniversary date, that 12-month timeframe between anniversary dates, or they would be lost. But they would be provided each anniversary date. The employees would receive those five additional PTO dates, so we would request your approval on Policy Number 1007. And I'm open for questions if you have any.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move to item 31, the NICE software upgrade for Motorola. This is amended city attorney employment agreement, and the short story on this is we've gone through Aaron's new contract, Darren's new contract. We really went and looked at Adam's contract as our city attorney, and it is not the same as everyone else's contract, so it made a lot of sense to be able to bring all three of those together using the exact same language, so everyone is on the same contract. So, that is what you have before you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we're gonna move to item 39. This is amended city attorney employment agreement, and the short story on this is we've gone through Aaron's new contract, Darren's new contract. We really went and looked at Adam's contract as our city attorney, and it is not the same as everyone else's contract, so it made a lot of sense to be able to bring all three of those together using the exact same language, so everyone is on the same contract. So, that is what you have before you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work. All right, we'll move to the master services agreement for electronic plan review software.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're here seeking approval for the master service agreement with LTC Software to provide electronic plan review. It will help our permit and planning departments to better be able to review and to reduce the redundancies that are currently going in place. The budget will be covered by the city IT department and the Water Resources Department, seeking your approval.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second, please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
All right, we'll move to Gateway Commission Appointments. So, you've got several people that are on the Gateway Commission by ordinance. We had this, or we have this whenever we set up the Gateway years and years and years ago, but we realized that there were several people who had expired. Let me rephrase that. Their appointments had expired. They did not expire, so we needed to reappoint those in case there's business that ends upcoming. So, for newer council members, whenever there's something that goes through the Gateway, it will go to that commission first before it comes to the city council, so we needed to have that board updated. So, for newer council members, whenever there's something that goes through the gateway, it will go to that commission first before it comes to the city council. So, we needed to have that, that board updated. And these are the same individuals, trying to scroll through here. It's John Jones, Harold Yoclee, and Gabe Frazier, if my memory serves correct. And Rick Sane. So, these are, most all of these are people who've served on that board since its original inception. I know Rick and Harold Yoclee have. I think John came on several years ago, so.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have a few beer permits.
Yes, sir. We have four regular beer permits. One is for an ownership name change for a grocery market located at 1007 Martin Luther King Boulevard. One is for a new location for a grocery market located at 508 St. Andrews Drive. Another is for a new location for a restaurant located at 1306 Westlon Boulevard Suite B2. And one is for an ownership name, name change for a grocery market located at 904 Northwest Broad Street. We also have one special event beer permit for Read to Succeed on November 8th at the View at the Fountains. All applicants meet our requirements, and we recommend approval pending final building and codes inspections.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Everwater.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Maxwell.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
Any other business from staff members? Any other business from council?
Really just, I guess, a comment, just talking with some business owners downtown and and just observations being downtown, you know, the ongoing homelessness. And when you take that into account, plus the fact that anytime you come downtown, whether it's morning, noon, or night, it's packed. There's a lot going on. There's a lot of people downtown. And I guess it's really more of a question for you, chief. You know, like, what do you need from us as a council in order to give you additional resources so that you have, I guess, an increased presence downtown to, to help out? Not that you're not helping, but I think if you've got a precinct downtown or you've got more officers downtown, I think that helps with some of the situations that continue to pop up downtown is what I'm getting at.
Right, right. So, just looking at some of the future development of the downtown area and some of the, I think, some of the, I think some of the visions that the city has for the downtown area. We've talked with staff about establishing like a downtown district to kind of manage some of the issues going up. Plus, you're starting to see a lot of activity in the square in the nighttime, you know, with some of the venues that are open later in the evening. So, our goal is to get increased presence in the downtown. I think we're going to increase staffing as far as just focusing on that district. We'll, we'll create a new district. And a lot of it will go back to when I started here. When I started here many years ago, you had a downtown zone. And basically, when you came in, that zone was always staffed and focused on issues up and around the square. And I think we're going to revisit that, that philosophy and do that. I think we'll probably need to add a couple of people to our host unit, which we can do that currently without any additional staffing and really direct the homeless outreach services team to the downtown area, because that's what we're seeing, and really get a focus on hopefully getting some long-term solutions for some of the individuals that we see as chronic and just really paying, paying a lot more detailed attention to that area. So, that's something we can do now. I think that's something that I know next week staff, we're going to be talking about getting that district drawn up. And I think long-term, and there's been past conversations, I think, with Gary when he was here, and there was talk about some of these new developments, possibly having some office space, something like that for downtown. We don't need that now as far as being able to move forward. We can move forward, and if that comes naturally later, at a later time, that, that would be great, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do want to remind, thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
I do want to remind everyone that we have our Count Me In 2025 Special Census that's going on. We've got promos going. Council members, I know, are sharing on their social media page. But to tell those who are watching how important this is, for every person that we get signed up, it's roughly $175 that we get in our shared revenue that comes back. And that doesn't sound like a lot, but if we have 20,000 more residents, which we think we do, than the last special census, you're looking at 10 to 12 million dollars that come to the city. And that's a lot of money when it comes to us being able to continue to keep your taxes low, to be able to pay for police cars, to be able to pay for employee raises, all of those things that, that we need your help. So, if you'll go to www.murfreesboro-census.com, you don't have to, you fill out the, the information. It's, we're not asking for social security numbers, those things. We just need who you are and where you live. That information goes nowhere else besides with the city of Murfreesboro, and then we report that to who we have to report to. But we're not going to use that for anything else. With that being said, if you don't respond either through your social, or through our website, through our census tracking, you will have the Murfreesboro Fire Department that's going to go door knocking. So, don't be alarmed if you see them knock on your door. They're not doing welfare checks. They're just trying to get an accurate count. And that's something that's extremely important, not only to our city, it's important to our state as well for us to be able to have an accurate count of, of all the Tennesseans who live here. So, please, if you have any questions, let us know. And then we've got all of our website. We've got QR codes. You've got the opportunity to be able to win a $100 gift card for signing and registering. So, there's all kinds of things that will, will, will be there, so. And. It will take you a minute or two at the most to fill out. It's really quick. It's really quick.
I did it tonight. I typed in my address, and I put in my name and Claire. Done in a minute. It's that easy.
All right. Darren, I don't have my calendar here in front of me, but we do meet.
We, we are not, we, well, we will add, we are not intending to meet on the 21st or the 28th, and our next meeting would be December 5th.
Well, we'll meet next week on the 4th.
I'm sorry. We are going to meet at the workshop December 14th. I'm a week off here, yes. So, we will be, we will be having our normal.
Yeah, 11:30.
Normal scheduled workshop, 11:30 next Thursday.
And then it's hard to believe that we start moving into Thanksgiving, so. And, and our city manager is also spelling tomorrow. Your what?
I'm in the, I'm in the spelling.
He's in the Read to Succeed spelling.
So is Jamie.
You're going to lose.
With Jamie, yeah.
And you can go to, you can go to the Read to Succeed website and contribute to either one of these.
Yeah, you can pick your favorite person here, me or Darren Gore.
Darren's word.
I'm just kidding. Best of luck tomorrow night.
Spell lawyer.
Best of luck.
Yeah, good luck. Good luck to that. That's awesome. All right, seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned.